Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome tonight to our June 2019 Planning Commission meeting, which I'll now call to order. Amber, will you please call roll?
Yes. Lynn Bledsoe, Robin McRitchess, Bill Chancellor.
Here.
Jana Jaeger.
Here.
Mike Glasempe.
Here.
Marcus Marshall.
Here.
Warren McCord.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Before we get started, I'd like to make a, say a couple of things. The first thing I'd like to do is welcome Ms. Jana Jaeger to the Planning Commission. She was recently appointed by Mayor Andrews as the mayor's representative to the commission, and we look forward to working with you. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Now, just a couple of things on procedure in terms of what we're going to be doing here tonight. The representative, there will be a number of items that will be presented to the commission by the city planning staff. And once that presentation's over, I'll allow the representative, if they have anything to say at that time, to go ahead and speak. And then, once, as appropriate, there are some things that require a public hearing, some things that don't. But when there's a public hearing required, I'll open the public hearing, and that will be your opportunity to speak about that particular item. Please limit your comments to five minutes, but we want to make sure that everybody's heard. Please come up and speak about, speak your mind, and tell us what you think about the item. Once everyone has spoken at the public hearing, I'll close the hearing, and then the representative will have another opportunity to address any of the issues that may have come up during that hearing, and then we will open the floor to discussion for the Planning Commission to deliberate and vote on the item. Another issue that's important is the idea of subdivision plats and our responsibilities as a planning commission. By Alabama state law, the planning commission is the final approval authority for all subdivision plats. We have a number of those that will be happening, being presented tonight. And with regard to the subdivision plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws, the city zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations previously adopted by the commission. So while we do require public hearings on all the preliminary plats for those subdivisions, and we welcome any and all public input, please understand that the commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements based in state laws and regulations that I've previously described. Also, as you come up, or if you haven't already, if you plan to speak, we'd like you to sign in and give us your name and address. If you have not done that yet, please do it after you speak. Okay, thank you. So at this time is the time for citizens' communications. In this particular, at this particular time, we invite anybody that would like to come up and speak about, there's two different items, either something that might be on the consent agenda, or something that is not on the agenda at all. So if you are interested in speaking on one of those two items, please come forward now. Okay, seeing no one, we'll start with old business. Item one is case PL 2019-224, East Glen Storage at Bent Creek. Mr. Caldwell.
Good afternoon. This case was tabled at your last meeting on May 9. It is a conditional use located on about seven and a half acres of CDD-owned land on East Glen. You should remember this from last month. Planting, excuse me, staff recommended denial based on incompatibility with the future land use, and there was a good bit of discussion about the aesthetic of the building from the commission with the applicant. So it was agreed upon that this would be tabled, that we would work, that the staff would work with, or postponed, that the staff would work with the applicant to revise the elevations and bring to you another, another version. And we've done that. Myself and Perry Solom, the authorized representative, have spent a good bit of time talking about this. Resubmitted some, as late as today even. This was the site plan for the storage development. North is up with the larger building there, and then along linear building, along East Glen. Some of the larger building were less visible from the roadway than the smaller building. This was the original elevations that we saw last month. Revised elevations, as noted in the staff report, are a mixture of brick and ephesus. Brick being the dark reddish brick, and then the beige ephesus, and then faux windows added along the linear building along Glen. The applicant can probably speak in more detail about the vision for the building, but... Should be noted, as we did last month, this is in the airport overlay district and is well beneath the runway, so should not pose any airport obstruction. There's the aerial, the site there. Any questions for staff?
Just to remind you again, westbound, there's still a deceleration lane.
So the comments that applied last month would still be, would still be applicable at the moment?
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this?
Ledge Nettles Baseline Survey, and Perry is somewhere between Opelika and La Grange in a traffic jam. And so he called me and wanted me to represent, you know, for him, and so I believe most of what the discussion's been between he and Forrest and Tyler, and they've done most of the discussion, so I'm kind of the dumber one of the group. And so what I do know is that they broke that long, small building into two, and there's a separation. And he's got some videos, I think, and some pictures further than what we have. Don't you have them?
He sent something.
This will show a little bit better. He's got, he said that the brick goes all the way to the roof on the big building, and I believe there was some discussion about multicolored brick, maybe, and...
That's a little more detailed than he had time to talk about this show up late this afternoon, so if you didn't make it in.
Yeah, there's the fence that's going to go between the two small buildings. And there you go. There's a little bit better of a shot of kind of what it is, not necessarily yellow, I don't think is what he meant, but that is more of the look that he was going for there.
Yeah, he's employing primarily brick and ephesus material for the building. Something else that I'll add, and certainly staff acknowledges this, obviously the land use designation here is gateway commercial because of the proximity to the interchange, and gateway commercial, literally interpreted, really looks at hospitality uses and other types of uses that are designed to serve automobile travelers. This property is unique in that it is challenged, and it is irregularly shaped, and it's also adjacent to the airport runway. So as far as the use is concerned, while, staff does not object to this particular use at this location, but it, but by the letter of the comp plan, this use does not meet the land use designation. So I just wanted to couch that recommendation, just to give you some, some relative perspective on that there, there are, you know, there are pros and cons.
Hence the recommendation for denial?
Yes. Right. It just doesn't follow the land use plan, but we acknowledge that this is a, this is a good use, given the location and the challenges associated with the property. And obviously, you've got a significant curvature in the roadway there, and this is also a very low-traffic generator.
Thank you. Want to, this does require a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. I'd like to start by asking a question about the, we talked about this a little bit at Packet, but I just want to, now that we have a representative here, just to get a little more idea of what's going on. There's a requirement that talks about a masonry wall or stockade fence. This is on page four of five of the Packet. So how's this, it appears that the building's going to be used as the barrier. I mean, how's, how's this really going to be laid out? Is there a better picture you can use to explain this?
There might be. That was what Perry was telling me just briefly. He said the building would be used as, there you go, as the barrier, and there would be a link between, you can barely see it between the two, that we staggered the buildings, but they will be, that will be the completion of the, between the two buildings, to prevent kind of a, any kind of ingress and egress between them. So yes, the buildings will be used as the barrier.
Because the purpose, I guess, is to restrict access?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll essentially be like most self-storage facilities. You'll have a code. It'll be locked until you go there to visit your facility. You'll punch in your code, and you'll get in, but the, quite frankly, the benefit of this plan is all of the activity area is essentially screened from view by virtue of using so much of the building to screen it.
I mean, there'll be something...
So all the loading and unloading should be largely not visible
Right.
From the right-of-way, which is certainly a plus for us.
That mean it requires some sort of fencing around the backside of it, then?
Yeah, they'll, it'll, it'll be entirely fenced.
Okay.
And point out that, that stagger, that we, they've done a little stagger between the buildings, so that you don't have that long run of just monotony down through there. So we did that and did some things beside, so...
Thank you.
I think the land is unique. I think that they found a use that would work and take the land into consideration and made it work.
Good effort.
Especially, yes, especially within this flight path and the traffic pattern. I do agree with the decelerating, because you're probably going in and out with a trailer or you all, or something like that. Not so sure about the sidewalk, but I know we love our sidewalks. But, and I think, you know, it's another business to all of us, so I would say...
And I think the revised elevations are a significant improvement.
Absolutely.
I mean, it was well worth a 30-day wait to meet with the applicant and get something that we felt would really be something that, because there's going to be a lot of traffic going by this location.
There was some conversation at the last meeting about another group, a downtown group, or an architectural group, or somebody looking at this plan.
The design, the design review team that was going to, that was basically commissioned, you know, as an advisory board for the downtown...
Now, there's, there's another development site. What we've talked about, it did not apply to this particular case. This is not within the, but when the downtown design review committee was created, their, their review boundary was essentially just the urban core and college ed's overlay district. What we as staff have recommended, and I think with good reason, is that because we, because we've incentivized a lot of the new urban form redevelopment, typically in the form of private dormitories west of the downtown and the urban neighborhood west, we are aware of a potential development there, that's, that one aspect of that is part of an agenda item later on in your agenda. But that folks in that area essentially volunteer themselves for that same review process, because we think in the cases that we have had projects, I think we've had three or four go through at this point, all of them have benefited significantly from architectural consultation and expertise that we, not that I have architectural expertise, but we do have two members of that five-member committee that are, that are architects, and their input has been invaluable.
Yeah, I just, it was suggested, and I didn't know if it ever materialized or not, that some went out of their jurisdiction.
Yes, sir.
Well, down to, yeah.
I think it's probably the most compatible use you could have at that location at the airport, and I think there's a significant improvement in the architectural layout that they've got here.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve PL case, PC case, PL 2019-00224, East Glen Storage at Bent Creek. With, approve, yes, approve. Sorry.
Any more discussion on the motion?
One second.
Good. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Chairman, may I make sure the discussion by both the city planner and Nonette will be made part of the public record, correct, the minutes?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Overriding our land use classification, I want to make sure this there will fly.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So our consent agenda does not require a public hearing, and it has seven different, eight different items. So it includes the consent agenda, consists of the Packet meeting minutes from May 6, regular meeting minutes from May 9, and six additional items. Item one is case number 268, Donahue Ridge, Phase 6 annexation. Item three is case number 287, Sharp Annexation. Item number four is 271, Donahue Ridge, Phase 5 Final Plat. Item five is, item 27, is case 275, Farmville Lakes, Phase 3 Revised Final Plat. Item six is case number 288, Gatewood Townhomes Final Plat. And finally, item seven is case number 289, Donahue Ridge, Phase 4 Bond Extension Waiver. Mr. Cotton.
Yes, sir. We start out with a couple of annexations for you, the first of which is Donahue Ridge, Phase 6. This is a 5.7-acre parcel. You can see it located here, up, up above it is Phase 4, to the right of it is Phase 5, and this will be a Phase 6. The property is contiguous, obviously, on two of the four sides of the property. This is a continuation of the Donahue Ridge subdivision. It does meet annexation criteria, and we therefore recommend approval. This is just an aerial view showing the state of the existing subdivision development and the new phases that lie along the south side of the property. The other annexation is the Sharp Annexation. This is up in the northern extreme of the city. So here we are, this is up in the Gold Hill area, and essentially this represents the county line between Chambers and Lee. All the property in remote proximity of this property that is in the city is zoned rural, and that's reflected in your Prox Map that's before you. Just, it's somewhat noteworthy that during the five-year update of Comp Plan 2030, an examination of the optimal boundary, and also as the result of a particular prior annexation request of the property adjacent to the west by a Mr. Twy, this, this property, which represented somewhat of a valley, was outside the optimal boundary. As a result of consult with the commission, a decision was made to essentially fill in that valley. So essentially, all of these properties on the south side of Ensminger Road are, in fact, in the optimal boundary. As such, and because of the contiguity, the property's eligible for annexation, and we recommend approval. Donahue Ridge, Phase 5 Final Plat. We just talked about Phase 6, the annexation request to the west. This is Phase 5. It's already in the city. It's already zoned DDH. You can see the preliminary plat that was submitted. There were some floodplain challenges on the east side of the property, so what you'll see is that the, the lot count has been drawn down based on some of the challenges on the east side of that property and that creek. We recommend approval. It meets all the requirements for final plat approval. Farmville Lakes, Phase 3. So we're still on the north side of the city. We're just north of Ashton Lake Subdivision, which resides here, fairly recent approval planned development district for Farmville Lakes, which includes some commercial out parcels along 280, townhomes behind that. And then this is the first phase of the single-family detached portion of the project. You can see where this is located in the northwestern extent of the planned development district. Forty-five lots, with 41 of those being buildable and four open space lots. This is the preliminary plat that you considered last year, and it's not uncommon for the preliminary plat to be larger in extent, and then as final plats come in, those sometimes get phased in incrementally, as is the case with this plat. So you've got the final plat right up along Farmville Road and Farmville Lakes Drive, which is the entrance into the subdivision. Again, all the criteria for subdivision approval for a final plat has been met, and we recommend approval. This is just an aerial view, and you can see that a portion of that, that lake or pond is included in the, in the subject boundary. Gatewood Townhomes Final Plat. This is just north of the intersection of East University Drive and Gatewood Drive, which leads one to Lee Scott Academy. The property has been vacant. It's also quite visible. It's actually currently being graded and prepared for development. It's zoned CDD. This is the preliminary plat that came in for the townhomes that are proposed to be developed. And this is the final plat that is proposed, very much consistent with the preliminary, the reflection of some stream boundaries along the front of there of the, of the image. And this is finally the aerial view. You can see the, the strip commercial shopping center that sits up in front of it. Across the way, you've got self-storage, and then the MapCo and Brewster's Ice Cream right there at the hard corner. Finally, we have Donahue Ridge, Phase 4 Bond Extension Waiver. So we've got a number of Donahue Ridge items on the agenda this evening. We talked about Phase 5. This would be Phase 6. Now we're back up along Phase 4 for a bond extension waiver request. You can see there's still a good portion of the subdivision that remains to be developed, and so a waiver has been requested. The engineering services staff concurs with the request, and this is an aerial view of the state of development in Donahue Ridge. We recommend that the consent agenda be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve of six items on the consent agenda as described by the director and include the minutes of the Packet meeting, May the 6, and regular meeting, May the 9.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to new business. Agenda item number eight, PL 2019-269, Donahue Ridge, Phase 6 Pre-Zoning. Mr. Kip.
Good evening, commissioners. This is a request for a pre-zoning on the property that you've just approved for annexation, Donahue Ridge, Phase 6. It is a continuation of the Donahue Ridge subdivision. The property's owned by Ifaco 2 Incorporated. Their authorized representative is Brett Baskin of Forsight Group. The request is for a rezoning to, from the default rural to DDH, which matches along with the rest of the subdivision. Staff has recommended approval, and there are some comments, just to call your attention to, for the record, that the applicant or the property owner will be required to do a revised infrastructure development agreement with this going to City Council, before this goes to City Council. So happy to answer any questions. I believe, yeah, Brett is here to answer questions, and thanks.
Like to, representative would like to speak?
Happy to.
All right. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, motion by the commission.
Motion to approve, then. PC case, PL 2019-00269, Donahue Ridge, Phase 6 Pre-Zoning, with all staff comments.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Item number nine, 2019-270, Donahue Ridge, Phase 6 Preliminary Plat. Mr. Kip.
Yes, this is a same property we just looked at with the rezoning from rural to DDH. The rural designate, or the DDH designate, zoning district allows four dwelling units per acre. The applicant has presented a preliminary plat with a density of 3.52 dwelling units per acre, which is within the allowable density. This is a 20-lot subdivision, conventional, single-family detached lots. And again, it pretty much follows the same pattern of development of the previous Donahue Ridge phases. Here is an aerial showing that property again. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this preliminary plat requires a public hearing as well, so I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to come speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the representative.
We're good with, with everything on this. The only question I have is, on the engineering staff comments, the last bullet point says, based on the cumulative number of lots within the Donahue Ridge, I'm assuming subdivision through to this phase, we recommend providing the second entrance shown on the partial master plan submitted during the development of the engineering plans. We can discuss the configuration with the applicant. Part of one of the other conditions was a lot layout plan on the, this one, I think, yeah, under here in the plan, talks about a lot layout plan. We have a meeting next week set up with the city to discuss the traffic. We previously did a traffic study for the Phase 5 that just was up for preliminary plat. That intersection functions fine. What we learned is, is there's a huge drop in traffic on North Donahue at Popular Ridge, or, I mean, I'm sorry, at Crescent Boulevard. There's a lot of people who are headed northbound and coming in and out of Camden Ridge through Crescent Boulevard. So the northbound traffic on Donahue, where the existing driveway is, is, is functioning fine. There's just a short little cul-de-sac across the street, and, and the level of service there is acceptable. As part of that Phase 5, we're also adding a decelerating lane and adding a third lane exiting the development, which, after doing the traffic study, showed that neither were warranted. My whole point of that is, is we're only adding 20 more homes. I don't think the intersection is functioning, 20 more units are functioning there. The current plan was to add this second entrance aligned with Crescent Boulevard in a future phase. We've been bringing these in in plus or minus 20 lot increments over time and doing about a phase a year, and I think that that's, that's kind of the game plan there. So all I'm saying is, is we prefer to remove that requirement, make it contingent upon a traffic, a traffic study, which we're already having to do a traffic study, and we're meeting with city staff to kind of talk long-term, master plan, and those types of things. I just don't want to get caught up to where my traffic study says something again, and it's, it's, it's a condition on, on the plat approval, and we're having to come back and try to change a condition on, on a plat approval at final plat as opposed to, to now. So I feel like you're covered with the traffic study being required, and we have to do a development agreement as well. So there's enough handcuffs on us there to get the second driveway, if it's do-so deemed that it's needed by the city at that time, when we can actually do a traffic study to support that.
How do we?
That's my...
That's, you feel that's a reasonable request, remove that comment?
That's reasonable. It was just a recommendation.
Okay.
Still, we need some more utilities, so that's something to consider, and we'll take care of that with the design plans.
We scheduled, we scheduled the meeting for next week based upon kind of the accumulation of all this, so this just kind of all happened this week to set up for next week, so...
So we'll just have to make that part of the motion.
Everything else...
Remove that comment? Okay.
Allison, I suppose your recommendation or your suggestion was based also on what has been the policy from engineering, that we want connectivity and more than one entrance to major subdivisions, not just traffic counts.
Right, and once we get over about 100 lots, we start to look at more than one way, in and out.
Okay. Any further discussion or a motion?
I don't, I think, I would be more comfortable approving it as it's recommended and let the engineer and staff and so forth work this out before the final plat. Just coming to us just at the last minute to make a change like that, y'all can work that out. It's just a preliminary plat. Y'all work it out and give us a recommendation to the final plat. Ted?
I mean, the only concern is, except to understand, is, is when we come in for final plat, everything's constructed. You know, it's kind of, we get preliminary plat approval, we then do the design, we then construct it, and then once it's constructed, we come back for final plat. So if we wait till the final plat, we're almost, you know, it's, do we have to build it, or do we not have to build it? You know, the rest of the subdivision is already built, so it's more of, can we get it worked out? You know, we can work it out with staff and, and those types of things, based upon the traffic study and all the other different encumbrances we got to go through to permit this thing. It's just if we wait till final plat, everything's already constructed, so it's...
Beautiful opportunity for a PDD.
Well, I understand that, but the last PDD that came in was turned down, so...
All right. Basically, what we're talking about, then, is modifying that, that bullet point to making it subject to the addition of another entrance shown on the master plan revision. Is that what I heard us talking about?
There is no master plan out there.
There's no master plan.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if we're dealing with this, I think you're probably covered, if, even if you do choose to go the route of eliminating that last bullet condition...
even if you do choose to go the route of eliminating that last bullet condition on Page 1 by virtue of the bullet that's 2 items up about the traffic study. So, what it's saying is, if the traffic study bears out, they got to do whatever the traffic study says. Brett's telling you he's convinced it's not warranted, but if the traffic study finds it is warranted, they're going to have to deal with that situation anyway. I think you're covered. I think you're covered that way.
And there is still, though, the issue of connectivity and more than one way in and out of major subdivisions.
Yes.
Should be covered, then, in any future addition to this development in the plan.
Okay, so I hear a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I... I'll try. I move we approve the preliminary plat with staff recommendation eliminating the last bullet of the engineering comments, but include that we do not separate... we do not nullify the need for a second entrance as this develops.
We can reflect that.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. I will have to recuse myself from the next item, so, Ms. Reese.
Agenda item 10, PL 2019 00276, the Preserve subdivision preliminary plat. Mr. Weintraub.
Good evening. We're still up in the same area, moving just a little bit further to the north and west. This is a request by Mark Arnold and the Preserve Land Company LLC to subdivide a new section of the Preserve Phase 5. This is Preserve subdivision Phase 5B. So, it's a remain... some additional lots. It consists of 27 residential lots, and then, there'll be two future parcels that will be developed in the future. This property is at the terminus of Graymore Lane, which is part of the Phase 5. Here is the phasing plan that was provided when they came in with the Phase 5 layout and the subdivision layout. So, this section in yellow has been completed. They're moving on to this area. And there are a few housekeeping comments. One that's noted, this plat does not reflect the stubout street that's on there, and so, the city engineer's office is requesting that this preliminary plat be revised at final plat time to include that stubout street to the property to the east. I did not receive any comments on this plat. This is part of a PDD, and it has been master... has a master development plan on it. I would be happy to answer any questions. This is the preliminary plat, and again, we're requesting the addition of the stubout streets of Graymore will go to the property line, and there's an aerial photograph.
Thank you. The applicant here. Okay. Welcome to speak.
Just wanted to note that the property to the east, where the stubout was requested, that is Auburn University property. They cannot sell their property. They typically don't develop their property into anything useful for having a street stubbed out to it, so that's why it's not shown.
This does require a public hearing. I'll open that now, for anyone wishing to speak. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? Questions?
What is on the university property that's to the east?
It's a horse facility, from what I understand.
Horses.
Horses. Well, my only concern is, is we've had more than we should have of people coming to us who live in subdivisions that had stubouts that were not built to the property line when the property changes. Now, the university is not in real estate business, but public entities often find property as surplus, and therefore, either land swaps it or sells it. I don't know about the university's policy on that. But that's my concern, if we don't show something there, and then, eventually, you remove any possibility of connection. That's a large tract of land.
I think that's a valid point, personally. Anyone else? Questions, comments, motion?
I move on approval of item 10, the staff comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to item... Agenda item number 11, PL Case 2019 290, Miracle Road Right-of-Way Preliminary Plat. Mr. Weintraub.
Yes, thank you. This is a request by Clayton Properties Group out of Birmingham, Alabama. They're requesting to do a subdivision plat. There's just 2 lots, but because there's infrastructure involved and the dedication of the right-of-way for realigning Miracle Road... currently, Miracle Road runs down here to Donahue... oh, let's hold it up. Donahue Drive, they're requesting to relocate that and bring it in further to the north on where the visibility is better, and then, run it back. This is for the section up to Sarah Lane. You've seen other dedication of right-aways and relocations on this property. There are a few planning comments. These are mostly housekeeping comments. I did have one property owner that came in to ask some questions. They were more concerned or interested in the relocation to the further north. I would be happy to answer any comments. This is an aerial photograph, so you see this is basically where the dedication will be, as well as there's the remainder of lots that's down there that currently is at the corner of Miracle Road and Donahue Drive.
Yeah, the exclusive intent of this is just to make for a more functional intersection alignment.
any representative here to want to speak about that? Okay. Alright, this requires a public hearing. Wouldn't anybody like to come forward and speak on this subject? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for discussion, comments, motion from the commission.
I move for approval of Miracle Road Right-of-Way at North Donahue, subject to meeting all of the criteria identified in staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Onto the final plat for the same property. This is case number 291. Mr. Weintraub.
All of a sudden, I've forgotten how this works. Okay, there we go. This will look very similar to the previous one, because it basically is. This is a request to go ahead and approve the final plat for this right-of-way at Miracle Road. Again, they're just dedicating the right-of-way to the city, as well as some easements, to realign Miracle Road as part of development. It is located in this location. I don't have any other...
This does not require a public hearing, so I'll ask for questions, comments, or motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item 12, agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number 13, PL 2019 292 320 Magnolia Preliminary Plat Request. Mr. Caldwell.
You'll have a preliminary and final, like you just had, for what constitutes 3.49 acres in the Urban Neighborhood West zoning district. There are currently 6 owners that represent 11 lots. Those 11 lots are being proposed to be consolidated into 1 lot. It is bounded by West Magnolia to the south, Tumer, Thomas, and Janelda to the east, north and west, located across from the university. Currently, there are such uses like Chick-fil-A, Domino's, multiple multifamily developments, and is the majority of the block, but does not include subway, which would be on the bottom left. And then, to the east is a parking lot, and then, what's shown in aerial is a multifamily building, but has since been bought by the university, demolished, and turned into a university parking lot. If you have any questions, authorized representative is Brett Basquelin. He's available for questions, as am I.
Okay, this requires a preliminary... I mean, a public hearing, so would anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? Please come forward now. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, motion from the commission.
Emails and the letters we got, are they made part of the record?
I'm sorry, sir?
Got some emails or letters.
Those were associated with the conditional use, right?
Item 15.
Oh, there was an email that came in. It was focused exclusively on the conditional use.
Which we'll come to here shortly.
Would that be made part of...
Yes, sir, we'll make it part of the minutes.
Right now, we're just on the preliminary plat for the subdivision.
Okay. if everyone's ready for a motion, I'll make a motion to approve PC Case PL 2019 292 320 Magnolia Preliminary Plat, with all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carry. The next item will be the final plat for 320 Magnolia. This is case number 293. Mr. Caldwell.
This would be to follow up the final plat approval for the 11-lot lot consolidation to 1 lot, 3 and 1/2 acres in size, in the Urban Neighborhood West.
This does not require a public hearing, so I'll ask for questions, comments, motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend we make a motion to approve item 14, agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, agenda item number 15, 2019 294, West Magnolia Drive Through, Conditional Use Recommendation to the City Council. Believe, Mr. Marshall, you're going to recuse. Mr. Marshall's recusing from this item. Mr. Caldwell.
So, with the lot consolidation that we just looked at on West Magnolia, as part of that redevelopment, the applicant, Chick-fil-A, and their authorized representative Brett Basquelin, are looking at being a part of a redevelopment of that property. As such, it'd be a significant change to the conditional use in the Urban Neighborhood West and existing use that Chick-fil-A is. And the significant adjustment would cause us to have a conditional use approval. Here, we'll look at the site plan. Some items of note of the site plan is a new building that would front Magnolia Avenue that'd be part of the redevelopment. What we've been told, but have not seen, would be a much larger... a building that would come above this, that would have residential above it with structured parking in the rear.
Is that commercial property? Is that what...
What would be highlighted here on the first floor is commercial, would be required commercial by the code. You do see to the left a long queuing line. This queuing line is to hold 38 vehicles, if I recall, and takes access off of Tumer Street. Excuse me, Thomas Street is on the west. The exit comes onto Magnolia, will be a right... a dedicated right turn with median along the center line of Magnolia. That's yet to be designed, but has been the agreement thus far in working with the applicant. We have the aerial of the existing Chick-fil-A site. Should be familiar with it, as it takes access off of West Magnolia, circulates, comes back onto West Magnolia.
Okay.
There are very few comments associated with this, but staff's available if you have any questions.
You mentioned structured parking. So, is this drive-through underneath one of those?
Right, as it's been relayed us, it would be a part of a larger development, and this would just circulate on the ground floor of the property.
This would be the surface... basically, the surface level of a multi-story parking deck.
And I don't know that that's been fully designed, if there would be parking under that, above it, and then, how that would be configured.
It's not a parking lot. It's a deck, a multi-story deck?
It's envisioned to be a multi-story deck that'll be wrapped by other uses, not dissimilar to some of the more recent construction you've seen downtown.
Will the Chick-fil-A building be underneath one of the subsequent floors?
Yes, sir. It'll... all those storefronts will be a street... street-front urban format storefronts.
Which would be a... something in front of, then, this building.
I think that's a patio or walkway.
Yeah, that would likely be a covered patio.
It's how it's kind of shown with the pedestrian corridor that goes up into the parking.
Yeah, I've got to imagine you'll have outdoor seating essentially out along the sidewalks.
And the applicant... Brett can probably speak in better detail about the plan.
And the drive-through itself is self-contained, not part of the general parking underneath there?
That's correct.
Right. Yeah, you will come in here, and you'll head straight into the queuing here, and it's, as you can see, it is structurally separated from the other parking.
And based on their good business and they've enjoyed existing, are these stacking lanes... does the staff feel like these stacking lanes are sufficient for this drive-through, for this?
Yeah, we do. I think everyone's aware of the problem we currently have there. It is not limited to meal hours. It is a constant obstruction to a very important roadway.
There was quite a large emphasis on that when reviewing and developing those plans.
Just as a question, under conditional use, could a condition be that if this stacking lane backs out into Tumer's Road, that they have to provide some kind of police direction of that traffic so that that does... so we don't have the same thing on that road that we do have on Magnolia?
That is a... that is a condition that you could choose to recommend.
What do you suggest? You mean Auburn City Police or some sort of a security company that would help?
I think to leave it in a general term and not be specific as to who does it, but that some police direction be given, should there be a backup of traffic there, to eliminate what we've got now on Magnolia. Now, it may not, because the staff thinks this is sufficient, but it may not be, and I'd just like to, you know, put it in the conversation that if traffic should back up on Thomas Street, could it be regulated by police?
Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'd like to open the public hearing for this item. Can... if you want to come up forward and speak on this, please do. And I do ask that when you are done, if you haven't already signed in, please sign in.
Yeah.
You state your name and your...
Louis Creb Corporation, we own the subway there, and we did participate in this, but I guess this is the first time he's seen it. Is that another right turn right before the corner there? Is that...
Here?
No. Go over this way. But would traffic be going in there? Is that what?
That's right, so that'd be 2 lanes, kind of a double...
No, no, off of Magnolia.
That's the exit.
That's a right... that's a right-out only.
An exit.
Is that out?
That's out.
Out. So they would turn right in front of your Subway.
Only entrance would be here.
Yeah, well, it's one that nobody's gotten killed right there where Chick-fil-A, the traffic is. So I guess that's, that's the first time me seeing that road right there. I thought that road could go anywhere but off of Magnolia. I mean, I thought the purpose of this was to get rid of that.
Oh, but that, yeah, this is only, this is only an exit, and it's going to be right turn only. So you won't have people coming out here trying to make blind lefts like you currently do. You won't have people backing up, trying to get in all the way down here.
I guess I'm just curious, there's an opportunity to, to get rid of that road, that road right there and putting it right back. I mean, it's dangerous. I don't know if you've ever walked along there, but there's a lot of.
Well, right now, you've got two accesses into Chick-fil-A. You've got one in and one out. And the people that go out, even though they're not supposed to take a left, frequently take a left. They won't be able to take a left any longer because you're going to have a median right along here. And when they do come out, it's right turn only. And you're not going to have any access to the Chick-fil-A from Magnolia at all. So that solves the backup problem here. They will only be able to get in here.
No, no, I, the backup problem is, I guess that's a city problem, but the danger of the road, I mean, here's an opportunity to get rid of that street right there between Subway and Chick-fil-A, or that, and we're not doing it.
Well, then how would you have a drive-through there?
Well, the proposal is to put a drive-through here with that road being part of the operation.
Well, I guess I want to come back and put a drive-through of my property over here. So.
There's a process for that. You can make application and do that.
I guess the preliminary plots that I saw, that drive-through was not going to be there. And I met with these folks and looked at all that stuff. Anyway, that's my, I think there's an opportunity here to get rid of that. I'm surprised nobody's gotten killed right there, as much traffic as it's being with Chick-fil-A.
Okay. Thank you. If you haven't signed up, please do. Anybody else like to speak on this? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and have, ask for questions or comments. One of, Representative has a point to make?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a few, couple of things. You know, one of the questions was, you know, sufficient stacking. You know, the existing Chick-fil-A out there can stack 12 cars, you know, on its site. Above 12 cars, they have to be out in the road. You know, I think like Tyler said, we have three times more stacking, and that's just contained within our drive-through area. That's not contained in any other portion of the parking lot. The other thing is that existing Chick-fil-A was an old Milos. It was, it's only a 2,300 square foot building, you know. And so, you know, they're somewhat limited on space and everything. You know, in this sized facility, the kitchen alone will be 2,300 square feet in this new building. So, you know, part of the stuff on whether it's, you know, the, how quickly they can turn over the food has a big impact on how quick they can turn over people in the drive-through. And so, you know, I think staff agrees that there's sufficient stacking. And I think from Chick-fil-A's perspective, they feel that there's more than sufficient stacking here, based upon what they see, and that's coming directly from their corporate design team. But happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
I have a question. I wasn't sure of structured parking until tonight, so my question now is about the safety. I mean, if something has a heart attack while they're waiting in line for their Chick-fil-A, can we, can we get to them?
Stack 33 in there.
If someone has a panic attack, I mean, I mean, that's my question, is the safety factor of, now that there's floors above you and everything, is that okay?
We haven't seen the design drawings to know what the grade of the outside of the drive-through lane, if you will. But Brett maybe can speak to that. They haven't submitted the engineering design yet, but once you're in the drive-through, you're just in the drive-through.
Yes, yes, you want to?
But again, he's showing a little bit of hatched area that may be bypassed. Again, we're not exactly sure because we don't have design plans yet, but Brett maybe can speak to if there's an emergency, how can you get out of the parking deck?
Unfortunately, with that site being as tight as it is, that's almost the case now. Well, you know, once you get in there, it's hard to not, to get out of that line, I think. You know, I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying that that's kind of the current condition to a large extent.
What, what is the hatched area that's around the stacking lanes?
I mean, that's vacant, I mean, it's vacant space, it's just separation.
Vacant space. So it's not going to be walled, so they can?
I mean, there's, there's some great separation on some of that, but a majority of the hatching around the drive-through will be accessible there.
I have another question. And it actually is a point that we got via email, as well as, Mr. Krib mentioned it tonight, is, okay, so we're not just planning for this site, even though we are, but let's think a little bigger. Subway wants, changes hands, does something, wants their own drive-through. Are we planning so that we understand that all of West Magnolia, any other owner could ask for the same thing? Okay. We feel comfortable.
And I think we're really putting ourselves in a bad way because we're getting so dense downtown, we've got to get people out of their car. And this is purposely putting people in their car so they can get some food. Why don't they park in this parking deck? There's going to be plenty of room to just walk into this place. We do not need any more drive-throughs bordering the campus. We need to get people out of their cars so that they can walk and do this. This, this is just going to exacerbate, exacerbate the problem. This, you know, we're becoming urban.
You're talking about customers that have automobiles, and they've got to drive to drive in the parking lot. You've still got the same traffic and probably more congestion getting in and out of a parking lot back onto the street than you have under a controlled condition.
You have, you have a point, but I'd just soon get them out of their cars, period. You know, I mean, this, this is going to start helping us do that.
Yes, but that's, I don't disagree with that. There's too many cars downtown, but it is what it is.
Well, I think one of the significant changes here that you normally do not see in, that makes it, I guess, more, more, quote, urban in design, is that we've taken the entrance off of Magnolia and placed it on the side street. And that, to me, makes a whole lot, makes it a whole lot more palatable to the site. In addition to that, I've never seen, and they may overpower this one, but for a fast-food restaurant to have its squawk box, how many feet is it behind the restaurant, Brett?
I mean, we're at, we're at, we're at 10 cars, you know, and 10 cars, you know, a car's 22 to 25 feet. But I mean, it's 200 feet between the squawk box and there.
This is, the footprint of this, this biz building and its drive-through, stacking lanes and so forth, is at least twice of what I've seen in any other drive-through or still restaurant, fast-food restaurant. So you spread it out much more so than normal.
I think this is a big improve, certainly, well, it's got to be an improvement, what we've got out there. I mean, it could not hardly be any worse. But I would like to think about protecting ourselves and hoping they have enormous business that they be required to have a traffic control officer on Thomas Street if traffic gets backed up to that extent.
Well, I suppose public safety would, would require that if they, if that happens and please.
They don't do it now, and every, every time I suggest it, there's some reason why that can't be done. And if we put it as a conditional use, it's a responsibility of the owner to see that it gets done.
If you choose to place a condition to that effect, as far as the traffic control is concerned, it needs to be clear that that, the onus for that would be on the, on the private sector, not, not our, not our public employees.
The same way it's on the churches on Sunday that are downtown.
Right.
To get traffic out. Okay.
Is there any dedicated parking patrons that want to actually park their car and walk inside?
It is my understanding that the conceptual plan for the overall redevelopment, that that, that level of the parking is designed to be for the, the commercial tenants. There would be a separate access for upper-level parking that would be exclusively for residents.
And I would assume if we did not approve a conditional use, that this design, that would fill in with just more parking?
Yeah, assuming that they choose to continue to, to stay there. Right.
I mean, in regards to parking, in the parking you see, see there, that's all accessible to the commercial area, to not only, to not only Chick-fil-A, but the rest of the retail in the strip there. It's well over 100 spaces. You know, just remember, like, if this was truly in the urban core, there would be no parking requirement for any commercial, whether it's restaurant, whether drive-through, or anything else in the urban core. This is not in the urban core. And so there is more than sufficient parking on the first floor for these uses, just in what you're seeing here. There's over 100 parking spaces, so.
Sorry, sir, we've already closed the public hearing. Okay. Further discussion or motion on this?
I'd move to approve item 15 on the agenda with staff comments, plus requires a condition of this use that the owner provide a traffic control official on Thomas Street when necessary. I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number 16, PL 2019-297, Spring Creek Farms, preliminary plat request.
Yes, this is a, sorry, this is a request from Kevin Anderson. The property owner is Graves Yard LLC. The applicant is seeking preliminary plat approval for a nine-lot conventional subdivision in the planning jurisdiction. It's along Lee Road 188. You see the preserve is here, so it's a good distance away from the city limits. The property is a 65-acre parcel currently, and they are requesting to subdivide that into nine lots. The smallest lot is a little over five acres, and the largest lot is 10 acres. They all meet the road frontage requirements at the street, so those are not, while they look like flag lots, they are not flag lots. And they meet all of the requirements of the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance. And I did not receive any correspondence for this case, and I believe the applicants are here. If you have any questions for them or myself.
Would you like to speak or say, have anything to say? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
And we do recommend approval with staff comments, and there's just a, a couple of notes that need to be corrected on the plat.
All right, this requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
Just verification, then. That part that, to me, is still a flag lot, maybe technically not, but that will be a private street.
That's correct.
And so designated on the plat.
Yes, it's a shared drive, has a shared access drive.
I move to approve PL 2019-00297, Spring Creek Farms, preliminary plat, with staff comments.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next item is 298, Spring Creek Farms, it's the final plat.
Yes, this is the final plat for the same subdivision that we just reviewed. Nine lots in the planning jurisdiction meets all of the subdivision regulations.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item 17.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, item number 18, case number 299, Sanford Commercial Subdivision, plat number five. It's the preliminary plat.
Good evening. Case before you, like you said, is a preliminary plat for Sanford Commercial, preliminary number five, or excuse me, number five. This is a continuation of subdivisions that you've seen recently for this particular area. Sanford Commercial came to you at the beginning of the year and established a planned development district as well as a couple of other subdivisions previously. The area around it, this is located in the intersection of Sanford, or East Sanford Avenue and East Glen Avenue in the Comprehensive Development District. To the north, you have the Highlands Church and Auburn High School. To the east, you have the airport, and south is I-85. Here's the plat. The plat itself is, establishes three lots, primarily the right-of-way for this road along the north and, along the north, that provides access to Lot 2M here in the south. That lot is the identified location for a multi-unit development that was part of the, that was part of the PDD. The lot itself matches the, the design that they provided at that time. That development will consist of 284 units for a density of 14 dwelling units an acre for that area and that phase of the PDD, with 9.5 overall for the PDD itself, which is within the code. Future subdivisions we would anticipate would be further, further subdivisions of this area here at the south of Sanford Village Court, and then again here, providing additional access into the, into the unit itself as well, to be determined, or to be designed and established later. Here's overhead, showing, showing some, some development, not shown, or existing structures along Sanford Village Court and along East Universe, or excuse me, East Sanford. Other than that, pending any other questions?
Do you have an overlay at the airport safety zone or the noise contours?
We do have that in a subsequent case, which I can move to here a sec.
For the final plat? There you go.
So this location, it's located right there, the cursor is at?
Thank you.
Is there a representative that would like to speak?
The representative was here, I guess he stepped out.
This is a preliminary plat, so requires a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, ask for questions, comments, or motion from the commission.
I move for approval of Sanford Commercial Subdivision, preliminary plats, subject to satisfying all of staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Move on to the final plat. Anything, anything extra?
Final plat, same subdivision. Here it is again, exactly as it is before.
Does not require a public hearing, so do I have a discussion or motion?
Move to approve PC case PL 2019-00300, Sanford Commercial Subdivision, final plat.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number 20, PL 2019-272, Grove Hill Office, conditional use recommendation to the city council.
Yes, sir. All right. All right, this application is for, like you said, conditional use in office, a professional office in the DDH zoning district with a PDD overlay. This is located at the intersection of Weatherford Street and Moores Mill Road in the southeast of town, just south of the I-85, Moores Mills intersection with I-85, or it's overpass, rather. It's located here at the, at the end of Weatherford Street. It was represented in the original PDD as, back in, I think, 2006, when it was first established, as a, as a daycare center. However, as you, as you know, two years ago, it was approved and the daycare center was moved to the opposite side of Weatherford Street. And the area that it was, that it now occupies was designated for office. And so those, those two uses have essentially swapped sides of the intersection. To the north, you have a large area that's still, that's remaining rural. To the south is primarily DDH with some rural to its, to its east. Here's a site plan that's provided. You can see the, the site here with parking to its front and just to the side. To its immediate east is the Grove Park and Zoom to Groom area, and it shares access with that building here off of Weatherford Street. The building itself is intended to be a two-story office building for professional offices with, I believe, as it's currently anticipated to be about six, six offices, three on the bottom floor and three on the top.
Okay, just to clarify. Currently, the, what's it called, the Grove Park Inn? To get there, you drive basically through that current parking lot we're looking at, is that correct?
That's correct. This curb cut here is already there and it is the only access to the, to the, to that facility.
Structure is just going to be basically somewhat right beside the Grove Park.
That's correct. If you go there now, the pad is already there.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
There's overhead. Pending any other questions?
Representative? All right. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so if anybody would like to come forward and speak on this item, please come forward now. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, ask for motion, questions, motions, or comments. Or in some order.
I'd like to approve the Grove Hill Office, subject to the comments by the planning department.
Motion is second, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number 21. PL 2019-284, Cypress Cove, multiple unit development conditional use recommendation to City Council, Ms. Robeson.
Yes, correct. This is a request for a mixed-use development. Commercial on the bottom will be offices, and then the multiple unit development, the residential units, will be the second and third floor of the building. The property is located on Airport Road, just across from the airport. You might remember last month, the townhomes were approved on this property. This is the section, the townhomes are here, so it's going to be surrounding the mixed-use portion of the development.
They border Airport Road, is that what you're saying?
Yes, they will be fronting Airport Road, but the townhomes will be back here. They will take access off of a newly constructed street here.
Okay.
And there are six office units on the bottom and eight residential units will be two stories. The future land use is light industrial. However, given the airport plaza here and the newly approved townhomes that are in the rear, it's compatible with the area. And we received an elevation this afternoon. This is actually the rear portion of the building that will be facing the parking lot. All of the parking will be behind the building. And we do recommend approval with staff comments. And the applicant's representative is here this evening.
Applicant like to speak? Okay, thank you. Case requires a public hearing, open the public hearing. Those, anybody would like to speak on this item, please come forward now. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and then ask for discussion or motion from the commission.
Now, I spoke with someone at the airport today. And the only, the airport is not opposed to this, and I think that was mentioned at the last presentation. But just, I want the commission to be aware that the south ramp that this building faces is, is, is being developed. So now it's, this facility faces basically the new Delta Center, which is going to have more and more activity as our program goes. More and more planes will be using the south ramp going in and out. There's also facilities on the south ramp that are, spaces, I shouldn't say facilities, that are reserved for hangars that may well be jet aircraft as opposed to prop, which are noisy. And so there really is a concern by the airport that resident may get more noise than they're anticipating. And we did discuss that with Parker when we discussed the townhouses, which Jason's, but I just want to reiterate that point because I think it is a concern with people, you know, move in and then find that it's, maybe, over time, it may get noisier than it is today.
Being a military guy, jet engines are sound of freedom, so I'm okay. I'm okay with that.
I believe we put, we made someone put the noise on the plat.
Yeah.
It was a note on a plat.
And I failed to mention that this is in the noise impact zone and they are required to do reduction in building.
Some of the materials, some sound mitigation in materials.
They're not required to, it is recommended that they do. And I think your representative at the last meeting indicated that he was talking to the owner and they would address it.
Right. Yeah, we've, we've done some research on it for, for all of that, for insulation and all of those things. I've got some information right here, but yeah, we're, and if that needs to be a condition, we're fine with that. We're, we're going to do it. The townhomes in the back were permitted by Rite who are going to do it there too. So we're okay with, with that. But I think you're right. I think the way it is in the ordinance, it's a recommendation. It's a guideline, right.
Ready for motion?
Did I open the public hearing again?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're entertaining a motion now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd move to approve item 21 with the condition that they abide by noise abatement as a requirement for these residential units.
One second, Matt.
Do we have a motion and seconds, or any further discussion on that?
May I amend it? Make sure that the noise impact is on the final plat and recorded? I don't see it. Like the fact that it's in a noise, a noise zone.
Well, this is just for the conditional use.
Oh, okay.
But we have levied a requirement on it as part of the conditional use.
The final plat will have to come back to you. I mean, you could note that at that time. We've only done preliminary plat to date.
All right, so I have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 22, PL 2019-285, West Veterans Apartment Multi-Family Development Conditional Use Recommendation. Mr. Caldwell.
Okay, this, this may sound and look a little familiar. Couple of meetings ago, you, you entertained a conditional use request for apartments on the east side of this property. That triggered some conditions that the applicant, the applicant thought this piece of property was more suitable for their development. And what you have is, is the same size, actually, it's 25.3 acres and is proposed to have roughly 240 units, which hits the density maximum and fully develops the property. It's located along West Veterans Boulevard and to the west is of note that the Industrial Development Board owned property and Technology Parks are to the west along West Veterans. The applicant supplied a master development plan for the entirety of the, the property, the ownership, the current ownership along West Veterans. And you see a mixture, a mixed-use commercial developments with this multifamily being on the western edge. The applicant is Josh Mandell. He is representing the property owners, the Phillips Family Partnership. And we'll take a look at the aerial real quick. As you can see, that even though these aerials are a little old, that, that is pretty consistent with what's there today. See I-85 along the south and South College exit, and then West Veterans, it traverses the family's property. That's available for any questions. Again, it's CDD and this development fully utilizes the allowable density for performance zoning, or performance development.
The applicant, would the applicant like to speak?
Sure. Thank you, good afternoon. My name's Josh Mandell, here on behalf of the developer. I'll be very brief. This is pretty much the same development plan that we discussed in our, in the past meeting. This is going to be a 240-unit Class A multifamily apartment complex with a full amenity package. This is not intended for students. We're not a student housing developer. The average unit size or bed count of our units will be two bedrooms. This is, we, we're driven to this, we're from Alabama, so Auburn's familiar to us. We've been watching the supply-demand situation with regard to workforce, traditional conventional housing. And with the Dantler study that was updated late last year and with the vacancy rates being around 1% to 2% for conventional housing, this makes to us a very viable, attractive development project. Thank you.
Ask you a question. Received some input from the SC Auto Tech, which is the, the plant that's right next door to this property. And they have concern that this is not a, not a really good neighbor situation because they have a lot of operational noise, like truck traffic and all that kind of stuff that comes in and out quite regularly. Is there, how do you plan on kind of mitigating that potential problem? Or have you thought through that yet?
We have thought through that. We're not certain, we certainly would not be doing a development if we thought that we had this noise issue. And we spent a lot of time during the day around, you know, in this site, observing noise. The last thing we normally hear are crickets and birds. I mean, it's not, it's not a heavily trafficked road. You know, most of the truck traffic goes out towards Cox where it's easier to get to the interstate and other, other areas. David, David Slocum has, our engineer, has proposed a very minor twist for our one building to the west that would provide additional buffer. He's drawn in additional buffer space if we had to do that. But we just, their use and our, you know, their use and, and our impression of noise, we're just not familiar with there being much noise around that property.
This industry does operate on a 24-hour schedule. So were you out there at night, did you camp out?
No, I mean, that's, that's a fair point. We've gone by there in the evening. What we have heard in the past is from, is, and what we heard from someone with IDB was that the noise, the biggest noise problem that has happened in the park related to a manufacturer much further to the west. And so we were not, this is the first we'd heard of SEA because of the nature of their business, not, we're not aware of it being, it's an injection molding operation. We weren't aware of it having a bad noise problem.
So this drawing is an illustration of the trees that would remain. And we've done a preliminary grading plan, so I can tell you with confidence, this is accurate. If you'll notice in the center, somewhat in the center of the development, there's a stream that branches and comes together and makes its way to the south to West Veterans Boulevard. That stream has buffers on it. Those buffers will remain undisturbed. So a majority of the site is on the far side of that stream buffer, on the east side. So they're probably a good thousand feet from the loading dock area of SEA with all of those trees in between. So you're really only looking at one building, the one building there that's on the west of that buffer. So this particular plan, we flipped the building, if you could flip back. Well, I know, that's, never mind. The building where the 760-foot dimension is pointing to, on the previous plan, was right adjacent to the property line. So you may have bedrooms right there at the property line. So we flipped the parking lot in the building. We put the building against the stream buffer. The parking is adjacent to the property line. And then we'll keep as many existing trees as possible and maybe even plant Leland Cypress there or something to serve as a visual and noise buffer. 760 feet is a long ways. And I really think there would be more traffic, more noise coming from the trucks on West Veterans Boulevard than there would be from the loading dock area.
Okay, well, this requires, thank you, a public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one, close the public hearing, ask for further discussion, motion.
Well, I don't know if you've ever been involved in trying to recruit industrial investment in your community. But that is a, our economic development staff has, the reason we have industrial parks is to provide protection for our industry as well as to protect the adjacent properties. I, I just don't see this as a place for multifamily dense development. The industry that locates here, one of the things they want is to stay out of the headlines. They do not want have to answer complaints regarding noise or traffic. We've invited them to this site, we, we helped them locate this site. And I think that it would be counterproductive to allow, knowingly allow, large numbers of people to live in that close to the industrial park.
In the industrial park?
Sorry?
Isn't that part of the industrial park?
They're adjacent to the industrial park.
They're adjacent to it. It's a difference, it's a different, there's a zoning line drawn right there, essentially.
Right there.
And it's, this is a CDD, if I recall, which allows
It is.
a wide range of uses. And multifamily was made conditional in the CDD because we know there's going to be uses in and around in CDD that are not compatible with, with family and dense residential.
The industrial development, do they have an objection, or this, because?
They're concerned. They're, I don't know, they're out of town, I suppose, but yes, they're concerned as well as the, the plant manager or the, well, I think it was a human resource manager.
Right, human resource manager.
I'm inclined to agree with you. I'm surprised they moved it to the west closer to the industrial. It seemed to me to be more compatible to the east. They just had to deal with Downs Way roadway access. And this, West Veterans Boulevard is more industrial or other commercial oriented than it is this dense residential, I, I think, but I.
Matt?
Sure.
So I did speak with the representative of the, a representative of the IDB about this. And I know that there's, that's not the only voice in this conversation on behalf of the IDB. But what he did express to me, and we had a great conversation, and he expressed legitimate concerns about. concerns about noise. Again, it was more related to a manufacturer that was much further to the west on the south side of Veterans. And his comment to me was, well, you know, that's just a general thought of mine. It's not saying I think there's this issue. He said, I think it's something I'd be concerned about. And I said, I appreciate that. We've observed this. We don't think that issue's there. We wouldn't want to walk into a hornet's nest and have to have the back, the backdraft from our residents. So that is our, that's been our experience with, with the IDB on this.
Are these going to be rental units or condoed?
Rental units.
Pardon?
Rental.
Rental units.
I do hear what you're saying about the, but the zone, I mean, the, it is literally the line, line is drawn right there and the future land use does say, or staff says that it's okay. And I don't know, I mean, it can go in there as part of this future land use.
But I just think it's
Free that it might not be, but it's, I guess, they think it's going to be very good for the, for the city. So they're willing to spend lots of dollars to put it in. But I don't know what our no has to have a really, really great reason.
Well, I mean, fundamentally, you've got to make a decision point if you think the use, and that's what conditional use review and approval is all about. Is it, is it compatible or not? If it's not compatible, can it be made to be compatible or can it not be made to be compatible? And that's largely going to be what your decision's going to be based on.
I ask him a question.
Sure.
What was your primary reason to move it to the west?
Because of the, primarily because of the Downs Way issue. However, we looked at possible ways to have Downs Way hit that eastern part of the property and any way it came through, it would carve up our property. There'd be, you know, there'd be a lot of cost to Downs Way coming through our property and it wasn't going to be feasible to develop on that side.
Downs Way connects residential area to the north, all to the north. That would be so compatible on the south side as it comes into West Veterans.
So again, if we had it cut through our property, we'd have families or people walking across a public right of way to get to a clubhouse or a swimming pool or something like that or just walk through our property and that was a, some.
Sounds like a design problem.
There will be a connection stubbed out as recommended by, I believe, the engineering department. It would eventually connect to Downs Way and that other residential area. And it is
From this property? Is it okay?
Yeah.
It's not reflected on the plan, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a recommendation, would be a requirement if you saw fit to approve this with staff comments.
You know, and just to put this in perspective, you know, I just sat there and listened to y'all approve a development near the airport. I don't foresee noise coming from 18-wheelers being anywhere close to airport noise. Surely if there's, there's room to approve something like that, we can find some way to.
It's not necessarily the airport, the noise issue, it's more of a compatibility issue, I guess, what we've been discussing here.
And protecting the industry, the university is not going to up and move that airport because a number of people complain about the noise. However, industry, this industry moved here from somewhere else in order to find an optimum site in which they thought they could produce their product with minimum amount of disruption. And the city facilitated them coming here and moving into our industrial park. And I think that, that's a little disingenuous of us to overtly make a decision that would cause them more difficulty when they could go somewhere else. Now, I know they've got a big investment here, but industries relocate all the time when the, the sites are no longer suitable. But that's just me and I think it's serious enough to not be compatible. What would make it compatible? I would have to look at much more buffering and, and I know you said it was 760 feet and this would be different if this was not the only piece of property you had in this vicinity either. You have some options. The, the mixed-use commercial to the east is not as big, but you know, I, anyway.
How about, let's entertain a motion then. I think we've kind of got the pros and the cons laid out here, so.
I think, I think, I think The applicant made a good point as far as the, what we approved along the airport in the sense that if we're talking about their residence, then that, that's kind of like a buyer beware type thing and plus it's a, you know, their apartments and whatnot, they can always leave whenever the noise is too bad and things like that. But then there's the excellent point as far as the, whether or not these industries are going to lose, move, they get a whole lot of complaints and whatnot. So I wish we had somebody from IDB that would actually speak to that because, you know, those are two different issues and one of them, you know, it's, I, I could say, like you said, if, you know, it really, really would turn based on, based on whether or not, you know, how strongly the industry would feel about, you know, these types of uses might adjacent to them. So I don't know where I'm going with that, but that's pretty much.
Of course, can you confirm that SCA got a notice about this?
Well, we got a, there was an email that was communicated from someone representing SCA expressing concern about this use adjacent to their facility.
Is there anyone here tonight to represent them?
I am not aware of there's anyone from SCA. We have some folks that are from economic development, but I don't know that they necessarily are in a position to represent the IDB.
Right. I'm, I'm just under the assumption that if it was a major concern for them, they would be here tonight.
Well, private industry, normally you don't find them usually standing up in audiences at public hearings. They just don't. They go, I say, we got the letter. That stands for, they felt that spoke for themselves.
I think with the opportunity, with all this land being vacant, you've got the opportunity to move it to the east or consider moving it to the east. And Ms. Chairman, I'd move to deny the request based on the compatibility with the industry to the west.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to deny this application. All those in favor of denial, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, motion carries for denial.
I think we need a roll call.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Phil, transfer.
Uh, no.
Wait, what?
You're for denial.
For denial, excuse me.
Yes.
Yes.
Matt Kalazinbi?
Yes.
Marcus Marshall?
Yes.
Martin Cord?
Yes.
Nanette Reese?
No.
Bob Wrighton?
Yes.
Okay. That'll move on to the city council next week. Okay. All right, let's see, we're on item number 23, 2019, 286, IDB, project number five, industrial conditional use. Mr. Howell.
All right, good evening, again. All right, so the, this particular case is a conditional use request for industrial use, specifically manufacturing in the industrial district. Location is just south of Beehive Road, Beehive Road and to the east of West Tech Lane on an extension that's not depicted here on the Prox map, but is there. This is a, down the extreme southwest side of town, as you can tell, you can see lots of large areas that are currently outside the city limits followed by either, either rural or industrial zoning around it. You also have the industrial park there. The site planned here in West Tech Lane being represented as it is, this site is the lot five of the West Tech Park Annex subdivision and comprises approximately 25.3 acres. That being this triangular shape here. The proposal, the proposal consists of a 343,170 square foot building, which consists of an initial construction here of 160, not a little, little less than 170,000 square feet of manufacturing space and about 12,500 square feet of office space. And then in the future, they reserve space for 161,650 square feet of future expansion Future land use for this area is industrial and is currently zoned industrial. Overhead of the current site, as you can see, West Tech, the extension is constructed there. It has frontage along Beehive and mostly predominantly off of West Tech Lane. It would take its primary access off of West Tech Lane here with a initial access off of Beehive, or it's not initial, but a emergency unloading access off of Beehive Road, which would be a secondary. The applicant has a representative here tonight and pending any questions, it may, or staff.
Applicant would like to speak.
Parker Lewis with Hydro Engineering Solutions. Just to clarify that, access off of Beehive would be construction to start, but that's it. I mean, it would be an extreme emergency access. That emergency would really be if something ever happened to that bridge.
All right, thank you.
It's an existing sort of gravel driveway that IDB would like to keep for an emergency if that bridge ever, anything ever happened.
Thank you. This requires a public hearing. I opened the public hearing. Anybody'd like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Comments or a motion, please.
Ms. Chairman, I'd move to approve item 23 with staff comments.
Second.
Motion's second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, item number 24, PL 2019, 296, Day Spring, conditional performance residential use has been withdrawn by the applicant and no further action will be taken. So I'll move on to item number 29, 25, 2019, 317, 151, West Veterans Boulevard Waiver Appeal. Ms. Howell.
This is related to the vet clinic, a vet clinic that is being proposed on West Veterans. The applicant was seeking a waiver for relief from a right turn lane requirement for that development. That waiver request was denied and today they are appealing that denial. Your packet's got a summary of the request and generally why it was denied and it includes a copy of the actual response letter that was sent back to the applicant, the denial If you have any questions.
Is applicant here who'd like to speak?
Okay, last item. I don't want to bore you, but I want you to make an educated decision on this. So I want to share a little bit of technical information with you and not only look at this from a technical standpoint, although it's a highly technical issue, but look at it from a practical standpoint. Thank you. Could you zoom out so we can see that whole sheet? So I want you to understand why we applied for the waiver to begin with. And in order to do that, I need to explain to you how a turn lane warrant works and then we'll look at some other factors also. So to look at a turn lane warrant, you need two things. You need the major road hourly volume in, in the busiest hour of the day and you need the number of right turns going into your development in the busiest hour of the day. And then you take those two items, you plot it on a chart and you see if it, if it warrants the turn lane, which we'll do that in a moment. So we, we did traffic counts and on West Veterans eastbound, our highest hour was 189 vehicles per hour eastbound. We're looking at eastbound because we're going to be turning right into the development. Okay, our right turn volume into the development was estimated at 11 in the AM, nine in the PM. I'm sorry, that is the total inbound trips, total inbound trips in the peak hour. So if we, we all know, I'm already bored and you're just young.
I've had a long day.
So if, if we're looking at 11 total trips, then we all know a majority of that traffic, and Dr. Albert would agree, is going to be coming from Auburn. They're going to be making left turns. They're going to be coming from South College making left turns. I would guess 75% of that, but just for argument's sake, let's say 50%. Let's just say five out of that 11 is going to be coming from the Lochepoca College Trailer Park area and making right turns. Okay, so we got our two numbers, 189 and five. If you would, flip to the next page.
Oh, no, there is.
There you go. I hope so. All right, so this is the chart and the way this works is you got to force your, your Y-axis and your X-axis. The Y-axis is the number of right turns in that busiest hour and the X-axis is the major road volume and vehicles per hour. So as a simple example, if we had 40 right turns and 800 vehicles per hour on West Veterans Boulevard, you follow that over, you plot a point, we're on the right side of that 40 mile per hour curve, so a turn lane is warranted. Does everybody see that?
The far, the line to the farthest to the right is
Yeah, the line to the farthest right is the one that's applicable, although it's 40 miles per hour, we're at 30 miles per hour. 30's not even on the chart, so we're going off of, so we would have to plot a point somewhere on the right side of that line. So let's look at our numbers. We said we'd have five turns, so we're about a quarter of the way about where that green plus sign is, up to 20. And we only had 189 vehicles, so we're not even on the chart, okay? We're on the left side of that 200. So you might say, well, that property is going to develop, that traffic's going to increase on the major road. Well, let's follow that, take that five on the Y-axis and follow it over, let's say instead of 189, let's say the traffic triples. Let's say from, it goes to 600 per hour. We follow it over to 600, you're below, if you would move the hand down, 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 we're at five, okay? We're not even in the curve and actually, if you keep going to infinity, we will never be above that curve because there's simply not enough right turns regardless of the amount of traffic on West Veterans Boulevard to warrant the turn lane.
So what, what is this, okay, so help me out here. This, we're talking about a waiver to the design and construction manual, which has certain requirements that have been updated fairly recently. Where, what's this, this looks like it's a normal way of analyzing this situation. Where does, where does this come from? Is this out of the design manual or is that
Prior, prior to that new regulation, which was probably approved, I think in January or December, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. We'd plot the point on there and we'd say, this is a no-brainer. You don't need a turn lane.
Granted.
Now, now we've got a requirement that any driveway on a collector or an arterial, any driveway
This is which?
Has to have a turn lane.
This is an arterial.
So that's theoretically higher volume is what that means, right? Okay.
Right.
This data's from a traffic study or something. What's, what, where'd the chart come from?
Yeah, where's the chart?
The chart is in the Auburn Design, Public Works Design Manual. That's where that came from. And it was copied from some other resource, I'm sure.
The data about how many, how many cars you get on that road and all that, like where's that from?
The traffic study.
Traffic study, okay.
Yeah, for this exact driveway. So let's, let's say, okay, we're not only going to consider the technical, the technical aspect, we need to know, is there some kind of safety hazard here? Is the driveway below a crest where you're going to come over a curve and there's somebody turning right and you're going to run into them or is it in a sharp turn or something like that? So sight distance comes into play there. If you would If you would show that photo. Should be the next page. This is a photo from West Veterans facing east. And if you see, not the car on the road, but there's a vehicle on the sidewalk, actually, down there near a white sign. And this isn't even as far back as you can see, but I went out and did a sight distance analysis today. You look at a three and a half foot object and a three and a half foot height, which is the standard that you use. And you, and you go as far back as you can from those two points and you measure the distance. So I rolled a wheel today and I measured 650 feet of sight distance. So to put that in perspective, the stopping sight distance for a 30 mile per hour street is 200 feet. That's stopping. That's coming to a complete stop. For large trucks at 30 miles per hour, it's 215 feet. We've got over three times that much sight distance. So not only is it not warranted, not only will it never be warranted, we don't have a dangerous situation here. So I can't find any justification for it. What, what we're talking about is spending $50,000 to construct a turn lane, move utilities out of the way, disrupt traffic to build the turn lane. Not to mention the burden on the city to forever maintain the asphalt striping and curb and gutter. It's just not justified.
Can I ask a question? Because when you said never warranted, one of the, this is one of the basic problems of infrastructure development in a growing area, is that the first in, the first development in often gets by without putting in the infrastructure, then later, as that may become warranted, and that's what I want to ask a question about the never in just a minute while you come up with the 600 cars. But later then, the public has to come in and put that turn lane because of the subsequent development later after, after the first client comes in. What is the projected full build-out traffic count, do you think, there at that site?
I mean, the master plan that was reflected a few, several slides ago, I mean, develops property that's been developed is pretty expensive.
Where did you get your 600, I think you said 600?
I was using that as an, as an example, if it tripled.
If it triples.
Yeah.
What it is now.
But if it quadruples, if it, if it's 2,000 cars per hour, it's still only five turns in the peak hour and it will never be on the, never be in that part of the chart where it warrants. Because it's just simply.
Five turns is what's generated by the use.
Right. The use is not going to change. And they can't even expand because of the stream buffers. It is what it is.
Good question.
What about if it ever changes hands? Did you do any projection for traffic council?
If, if the business becomes something else?
Yes.
I mean, we don't typically design things for what-if scenarios like that, but at that time, it would have to be evaluated if it became something like a McDonald's with a real high traffic volume. I mean, that could happen to any business.
Can we make a motion?
Well, let me do, I, I, I mean, everything you said makes a lot of sense. I think that the, the issue, and I'm not sure which way I'm coming down necessarily, but the, if we make a waiver on this and overturn what's in the, the engineering design and construction manual, and it seems like we'd have to have a good reason to do so, it's just not just like, well, under the old way, this would be fine, but we're not under the old way, we're under what's currently in the manual. So I'm just saying, whatever we do, we need to kind of have a, a good reason for, um, for overturning this, is basically the way I'm looking at it.
Well, right now, it sounds like the, the new change just says, I don't care what the use is, we're going to do it because it's a arterial. And you have a pretty low impact use in terms of a lot of traffic. So I mean, is there, why don't we have a, uh, why, why wouldn't it make sense to have some kind of a, by case-by-case basis kind of analysis for this sort of thing?
But that's the way it used to be as well. It was a, it was a case-by-case, before it went in the manual.
And so then what drove the change, then I guess would be my question? I mean, why, why did we decide, hey, we've had enough of that, let's just, uh?
Primarily for future redevelopment, future protection of our, of our infrastructure and capacity on our roadways. I think Dr. McCorr may have mentioned, uh, in some cases, the city, we've built right turn deceleration lanes in many places around town to help protect our through lanes. So the change was warranted because of that.
Okay.
Not just looking at today's traffic, but looking at future traffic. David makes good points, this is a low-traffic generator. Unfortunately, I don't have the flexibility to, I guess I do have the ability to waive his request. But again, this is a new, a new requirement for us. I did look at it on a case-by-case, you asked. We do evaluate each waiver on its own merits and we felt in this case, other models appropriate.
Okay.
Let me find a way that I can rationalize myself into this. I understand and appreciate the problem. I would imagine that, that Dr. Albert had already made some decisions about opening his practice here by the time we approved that manual.
That's right.
I'm Dr. Albert, can I?
Sure.
When I, I made a, I put a contract out on this in October. We had no idea that this was coming to be, or I didn't. The thing that concerns me more than all of it is that, uh, in a world that doesn't need any more asphalt, uh, is putting 100 feet or whatever that is. And two, I'm trying to build something really different than what we have as far as clinics are concerned. I don't know if you guys have ever seen this property, but it's as picturesque as it can be. There are gargantuan oak trees and, and of all sorts, and pine trees down on the property that I'm going to preserve. Now, what I'm trying to do is build a clinic that's not as medicinal, or whatever you want to call it, as other clinics. I'm trying to maintain something that's kind of a loggy-type, beautiful site. And, and I've got buffer all the way around me. It's, um, there's, there's only about two acres in there that are developable, but it's over three acres, a lot of it's on the flood plain. I'm going to maintain all of that back down to the creek, to the creek and keep all the big trees. That's why I chose this location, is because it is out of the way. I don't want the traffic, um, but I don't want to disturb that curb frontage that you have there too. And I think that, given the low volume of traffic that's on that road, because that's kind of the reason I chose that place, that this is just, you know, we closed and I closed on this in February, had I done this, you know, I mean, and it's just, this was just something I wasn't expecting.
Well, for that reason, I think, I, in other words, I don't want to set a precedent that, that we end up all the way down that road as it develops and then the traffic counts pick up, that other people will point to this waiver. However, I do think you were making your location decision prior to this manual being developed. The manual is not as visible to property buyers and so forth as our ordinances are. And therefore, I can support the waiver. But I do think that, that all you guys who represent clients, be aware of the fact that we also, even though right now there's not an impact, I don't want my grandkids to have to come back and build your access because it's gotten so bad, nobody can get in your, your property. So, you know, and I do say, this is a very low impact use, and I hope you have more than five clients per day, you know what it is?
Per hour.
Oh, per hour, okay, you might get, and those nice oak trees would be a good place to let you, your dog.
Walk around.
Yeah, walk around before they go in, but.
Do I have a, hear a motion then?
I move to approve PL case 2019, 00317, 151, West Veterans Boulevard waiver appeal in order to give them their waiver for turn lane.
Approve the waiver.
Approve the waiver.
I'm approving the waiver. Yes.
Motion's second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Yes, let's quickly have a roll call.
This is a motion to approve.
Approve the waiver.
Bill Chandler.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Jana Yeager.
Yes.
Matt Leszny.
No.
Marcus Marshall.
Yes.
Warren McCorr.
Yes.
Nonette Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. That brings us to the end of our business. Mr. Cotton, do you have anything for us?
I do not, uh, at the moment, no. Just a reminder that you will have that, uh, you will have that zoning ordinance text amendment related to the ADDUs in the North College Historic District, just so no one's surprised by that. I know we talked about it on Monday.
So what are we expecting on that, ma'am? We're just, this, this new, um, amendment, I guess, is what it would be.
It would be a, it would be a zoning ordinance text amendment. It would prohibit ADDUs in the North College Historic District or any parcels that abut parcels that are in the North College Historic District.
Yes.
And you'll have a, you'll, it'll be just like any other case, you'll have a staff report from me and all that, but I just wanted to give that to you as a reminder.
Okay, good.
Just one, one more reminder about that.
All right, I don't have anything else. We'll close the meeting. Adjourn.